This July 13th, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by Doris Doherty, Cappy's nominee from South County High School. the middle of summer joining us. That's above and beyond the call of duty. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on July 13th, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All those in favor? Schultz, Corbett, Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Wilson, Derenette Kofax, and McElveen. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Ms. Hines. And that motion passes. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. We welcome Dr. Braybrand for his first regular School Board meeting. And we also welcome Nehirika Vatakonda as our new School Board rep, student rep. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that's being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meeting's webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. Signs shown in the auditorium. We're happy to have all of you here tonight expressing your views, but please be sure that your signs do not block the sightline of members of the audience or security staff or impede any foot traffic in the auditorium. It's recommended that signs be handheld and made of paper, and we appreciate you helping us with that. I do want to announce that Ms. Palczek will not be with us tonight. The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, ten citizens have signed up to address the Board. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. The first speaker tonight is Marley Finley.
I'll be giving my spot to Debbie Danker.
Thank you, Marley. Good evening. My name is Debbie Danker, and I would like to address an issue related to the proposed Advisory Committee charges, specifically the charge to the Committee on Minority Student Achievement Oversight that invokes One Fairfax. I support the proposal. In this context, I would however point out that having my neighborhood high school named in honor of Jeb Stuart is inconsistent with One Fairfax, because Jeb Stuart is a figure known basically only for fighting in support of the Confederacy and slavery. As you know, One Fairfax calls for an intentional racial and social equity policy and says that racial equity requires that we act to eliminate institutional racism. So I just don't see how continuing to celebrate Jeb Stuart in this way can be consistent with our county's One Fairfax resolution. Naming a school for someone is a special honor. It demands that our children see and say that name over and over every day. It requires that they wear that name on their uniforms when they play sports, and more generally, it forces them to form a community and a shared identity around that name. Now, I don't know for sure why almost sixty years ago, the School Board decided to bestow that special honor on Jeb Stuart and name the school after him, but that was then, before Fairfax County Public Schools were even desegregated, and this is now, 2017. And you are going to decide on the name that the kids in my neighborhood will be asked to celebrate and honor. Please, don't decide to honor this Confederate officer by maintaining his name on our high school. My three kids have attended the school. It's a great school, but it needs a new name. To quote a simple declarative sentence from the conclusion to Yale University's report on principles for renaming its buildings, "Symbols Matter." Please change the name to signal that this county cares about and welcomes children of all races. Finally, for the sake of the community in which I live, please do not delay further. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Vince Natuno.
My name is Vince Natuno, and I'm one of the founding members of the Jeb Stuart Alumni Association. My daughter Laura was an alumni and graduate of class of 2012. I'd like to talk briefly on the agenda topic Advisory Committee changes, which includes Facilities Planning Advisory Council. I support amending the Facilities Planning Advisory Council charge to prohibit the consideration of spending any money on costly, unnecessary, divisive, and potentially $1 million name changes when there are so many more pressing needs in the schools, like limiting class sizes, lagging teacher salaries, rats and cockroach infestations, such as at Jeb Stuart. Why would people want to teach in Fairfax County with overcrowded classrooms that pay less pay and rats and cockroaches? As to the current pending name change of Jeb Stuart, I've met with a number of Board members, and one question that was asked, "How do I vote to keep a name that a black student feels uninspired and ashamed of?" I would answer this way by reversing that question. How could you vote to remove the name of Jeb Stuart High School that has stood for nearly sixty years and until now has not been considered shameful? How can this Board go back to all the more than sixteen thousand white, black, Hispanic, Asian, and any of, or any of the successful and spirited Jeb Stuart alumni and tell them, "You should have been ashamed that you found inspiration at your alma mater. Shame on you for wanting to keep the name of Jeb Stuart High School in place. It is wrong for this school and the NAACP to shame the alumni by asking, 'Why were you not ashamed of your school as we now feel you should have been?'" Those who have gone before us through Jeb Stuart High School have the right to maintain pride in their legacy as Jeb Stuart High School graduate. I served on the Ad-Hoc Committee for Name Change. Note these four words: goal, authority, resources, and responsibility. These basic principles of management 101 says that you must have all of four of these elements in place to accomplish any given task. Missing any one of them makes it impossible to complete the assignment. If you look at this list, not one of them was defined or provided by the Board prior to asking the Committee to get their job done. This is why the final reports are so divided and have no credibility. If the community truly desires a name change, then the community engagement process must be reset and completed in a manner with integrity and transparency, and the term "community" must be predefined. We initially started with the understanding that the community meant the Jeb Stuart Neighborhood. However, the Jeb Stuart Neighborhood rejected the name, and surprisingly, very late in the process, the term "community" was expanded to include all of Fairfax County taxpayers. The NAACP and two School Board members have continued to manipulate the process to achieve their own personal agenda. This collusion with a national special interest organization is absolutely a violation of the Board's Code of Conduct and put the entire Board in legal jeopardy if the name is now changed. I request that the School Board members Sandy Evans and Pat Hines recuse themselves from any vote on this issue. The Free Book of Information documents I have reviewed and here provided clearly show them to be in violation of the Conflict of Interest Clause of the Code of Conduct. They have abused the process and violated their oath of office. Thank you.
Mike Nie.
As a father of two children in this county, I strongly support the resolution of the Advisory Board Committee to stop or prohibit the funding of name changes. Start from Jeb Stuart, we have a dozen schools could have name change risk, including Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, Mount Vernon, Fairfax, Robert Lee, Liz Goshang. Millions of dollars of taxpayers' money could be wasted or abused. My objection of name change funding comes from three factors. Number one, the name change is unwanted, unwarranted, and unsupported. Back in 150 years ago, the slavery issue had been resolved, and generations of citizens this county studied in school got used to names, and the nation moved on, the history moved forward. In the famous 1865 speech Abraham Lincoln, the speech titled "Meliss toward none," he resolved the difference between North and South, he preserved the Union, and he healed the wound. Why we open up this issue again? Why we waste our time and energy? Second factor, our county school has way more areas in urgent funding needs. Look no further, our overly crowded class, underpaid teachers, and around down classrooms. Remember my son's trailer classroom mentioned multiple times? We are debating on the Jeb Stuart name change while led to the rats running, infesting the school. It's ludicrous. It's like ringing a range, the beach chairs on a Titanic when the ship is sinking. So use your common sense. Number three, this endorsement of the name change funding prohibition received support from fourteen organizations, thousands of families in this county, tens of thousands of voters, including fifteen hundred Chinese families. I'm a Chinese. In my culture, China has 5,000 years' history. We have numerous emperors, kings, slave masters. During 1960s, under the Communist China, the notorious Cultural Revolution, the country tried to eradicate the history, damaged numerous historical buildings, renamed cities, schools, and streets. What did it get? Nothing. Look at Communist Russia, changed from St. Petersburg to Lienensberg, now get back to the same name. What's the point? So I urge the School Board, support the resolution to no funding to the name change, preserve history and heritage of our county. Thank you so much.
Debbie Ratliff.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and welcome to you, Dr. Braybrand. This coming school year is the inaugural year for the Human Resources Advisory Committee, whose focus is employee retention, in alignment with the Strategic Plan Goals of creating a premier workforce and embracing a caring culture that recognizes the importance of community. The issue of the Jeb Stuart High School name change is relevant to this topic, vis a vis the FCPS goal that, based on their positive experiences, students, former FCPS students of diverse backgrounds will want to return to their community as FCPS employees, to be part of a premier workforce that welcomes diversity and change. Our community's discussions of diversity and bias in our schools and how that is connected with school names is part of this conversation. I've done a lot of thinking, reading, and listening over the past two years, and I've found that while one size does not fit all in the national discussion of school name changes, there are common threads in the context of public school name changes in at least four states: Virginia, California, Texas, and Florida. Number one, cost has not been a barrier to change school names. Number two, community input is valued and has been sought in every single case, as in Fairfax County. Number three, the name change discussion often considers the life achievements of the existing namesake and whether that person had made significant contributions to public education or a significant contribution to the greater good as a public servant, and/or, in the case of Confederate figures, if that person had actively participated in reconciliation in his lifetime. Of the school name changes that I found in my research, nine Confederates' names were taken away, two of slave owners, and six who fought integration, desegregation, and civil rights. Number four, the majority of school systems chose new school namesakes who are individuals whose life's work includes advocacy for education, civil rights, and public service. They include community leaders and teachers, a Native American, former enslaved African-Americans, and an academic. Number five, the length of the process to change school names in these other examples has lasted less than one year in most cases. Number six, in many cases, the School Board or trustee's decision to change a school name has been by unanimous vote. Number seven, in just a few cases, the name change has been accompanied by a policy change of some kind. Number eight, lawsuits, injunctions have not been successful in stopping a name change at any public school in the United States to date. The Fairfax County School Board and the Fairfax County community would not choose the name Jeb Stuart and the Confederate flag for our community today in 2017. They are not symbols of a caring culture and do not support FCPS Strategic Plan Goals. Can you indulge me to wrap up?
Wrap up in a sentence or two, please.
Thanks. Changing the name of Jeb Stuart High School will support a welcoming, inclusive, and supportive community that will help attract and retain talent and reflect how much we all care about our community, a community that's welcoming and diverse. I encourage you to read the research about these other school systems as you discuss name change Monday afternoon and as you formulate your decision to support changing the name of Jeb Stuart High School. Thank you.
Andrei Bilidou.
Good evening, School Board. I came on this evening as a fill-in. Thank you for the moment to speak. I am the Executive Director of the Native American Guardians Association, and we do work with schools around the country in educating, not eradicating. Now, while I'm not against school name change in Fairfax County, I am for a process which is honest and community-based. As my family did go to Jeb Stuart, I had to pupil transfer my son out of that school because of this campaign. I found it to be malicious, misguided, and untruthful. My group works around the country, and we've recently had successes in Oregon, Michigan, Oklahoma, and Massachusetts, using both federal and state guidelines to save schools. And once again, we educate, we do not eradicate. We do know that Fairfax County as a whole has thirty to fifty million at-risk schools in buildings and names, and if we're going to do this, let's do it right. In March 2016, I did send a letter about the survey, it was called a survey, that was done. I warned against its basis and its science. This is something I do for a living. I suggested changes. No changes were made. What it turned out to be is a vote. It was a for or against Jeb Stuart, and we all know that only 1% of the community voted for name change, 1%. That population of 1%, we know, was groomed for about one year prior to the vote and was warned that a School Board election ballot for name change was coming out. Once again, what we do know is that the community is not invested in this process. If my children are going to continue to go to Jeb Stuart, I want to make sure that their time there is balanced, fair, understanding, and sensitive. Three years ago, I had a school loss in New York. Eighty-five percent of the students and community did not want this name change. Back then, they could rally to get close to a million dollars a year in booster funds for their sports programs and other activities. In the last three years since they changed their name, there's still a wide split in the community. Every School Board member that voted for name change under the auspices of a campaign levied on the community from the top, not the bottom, using false information and smear tactics, has hurt that community. Three years later, what they should have gotten in one year, they're only at $190,000 in fundraising, where they should have been a million a year. Clearly, that community is split. What I would ask, once again, is to reconsider how this process is moving forward. I'm okay with name change, as long as my neighbors understand the dynamic behind it, the facts behind it, and might I remind you that GMU is willing to dissect out the arguments that have been levied to the students, the teachers, and the School Board as to what's real and what's not. I would ask that you go to Stuartfacts.com, see the reports on what's happened to the students, and see the refutations that have made against the charges levied against Jeb Stuart High School. Thank you.
Steve Finley.
I'm standing tonight in support of my daughter, who went to Stuart High School, and she supports the name change, and I support her, and I support all of her friends that you've also heard from, that have told you how painful this name is and what a bad example they believe it sets, looking forward into the future. And I want you to take your responsibilities seriously, to embrace the One Fairfax principles that you've adopted, and support the name change. I'm ceding the rest of my time to Robert Rigby.
Good evening, School Board members and staff, and welcome Dr. Braybrand, who your first School Board Member, Superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I've been working here for eighteen years. I want to speak tonight about the charge to School Board Advisor Committees and the name of Jeb Stuart High School. I've served on two committees, the Human Relations Advisor Committee and the Health Plans Task Force. I and my colleagues found it useful to have an explicit charge from the School Board, but at the same time somewhat frustrating. The explicit charge helped to focus the discussion, but at the same time, staff's tight control squelched information and ideas that may have related to the committee's general assignment, but not directly addressed that year's particular charge. The name of Jeb Stuart High School is one of those concerns that, oh, I skipped something here. The name of Jeb Stuart High School is one of the concerns that stakeholders brought up in those advisory committees, though they brought them up through other avenues. Here's my personal take on it. When I was in Middle and High School in Pensacola, Florida, our School Board was tasked with integrating schools. Then, students and community members brought up that one of the high school mascots was racially charged. The issue was even more charged in northern Florida in the seventies than the name of Jeb Stuart High School is here and now. There were Ku Klux Klan rallies and marches, crosses burned on lawns, and guns drawn and fired. I really hope and expect that it will not reach that level of hysteria here, but the Escambia County Board did the proper thing in 1976 and changed the school mascot. It took real, personal, and physical courage. The path to take with the name of Jeb Stuart High School is very clear, but you must have the electoral courage to move forward. You will have much support in this community, as you have seen over many nights. As a teacher and the president of an employees group, I have this thought: Can you attract employees in what is becoming an increasingly competitive nationwide market for teachers and administrators to work at a school named for an arrogant man whose claim to fame is that he fought to retain slavery? If you were a teacher who cared about all students, would you want to work someplace with this name? My time is almost up, and I'm going to say my students would love it when I teach grammar if you put a three-minute buzzer on me.
Matt Bush.
I'm Matt Bush, and I'd like to talk to you tonight about the agenda topic, Human Resources Advisory Committee, which included teacher retention. Did you know that over the past year, Jeb Stuart High School alone lost forty-seven staff members? Forty-seven! One of the largest number of resignations in that school entire history. Why would that be? Let's take a look. First, I'll give you a quote that I like, and I believe is important in retention. "You can buy a person's hand, but you cannot buy their heart, for the heart is where enthusiasm and loyalty resides. You can buy their back, but you can't buy their mind, because the brain is where the person's creativity, ingenuity, and resourcefulness resides." Stephen Covey. Many of the School Board and in the administration spent an inordinate amount of time of resources and of resources by the way of man-hours, meetings, emails, phone calls, Starbucks encounters, FDB meals, facilities assessments, hearings, ad hoc committee, modifying regulations to support changing the name of Jeb Stuart High School, while a myriad of tangible issues languished. Consider for a minute, take yourself into the eyes of a teacher, that your administration and School Board focused on an issue that had little tangible benefit and even less scientific validation of what it seeks to correct. There's no programmatic evaluation of this intervention, let alone, you as a teacher, have seen a very inclusive, multicultural school become viscerally divided over an issue that has been stoked by a small group facilitated as a puppet master by a special interest group. That special interest group, by the way, is making money off of this issue. Think of that, a special interest group making money off of an issue, all while you as a teacher, you don't see your salary growing, you see it staying stagnant, but you see your class size is growing. Your school's infrastructure is inadequate and seems more hospitable to the infestations of rodents and cockroaches than to students and teachers. How do you, as the School Board and the administration, look a teacher in the eye and say that you are less concerned about the teacher's immediate tangible issues than that of an intervention which has no scientific validation? Maybe we can learn something about retention by studying Jeb Stuart. Let's take a look from the words of those in his ranks. After Stuart's death, a soldier stated, "I myself mourn my chief as deeply as if I had lost a beloved brother, and I really felt possessed with a longing that I might die myself." Yet, soldiers wrote- soldiers wrote, yet another soldier wrote, that in part celebrated Stewart's tenderness, feeling, and joy. I'll leave you this for consideration. The teachers who were outwardly vocal about changing the name did not resign. By focusing on changing the name, the students have lost 47. Forty-seven. But probably about five were saved by changing the name.
Christian Barbosa.
My name is Christian Barbosa, Jeb Stewart Class of 2011. I would like to address the agenda topic, School Board Liaison and Committee Assignments, which includes the Facilities Planning Advisory Council. I support the amending of Facilities Planning Advisory Council's charge to prohibit the consideration of spending of any money on the costly, unnecessary, and divisive school name, the change. There are pressing quality of learning needs that must be addressed at Jeb Stewart amongst other more worthy expenditures. In addition, the more I have researched Jeb, the more pride I have in feeling, more pride I feel having graduated from a school bearing his name. The great challenge to Virginians in 1861, especially those who had already risked their lives for the United States military, was where their identity and loyalty lay in the case of open conflict. Jeb, in a speech before the war, said, "Ours is a glorious country. I love it. But like Mr. Calhoun, while I love the Union, I love Virginia more. And if one attachment ever becomes incompatible with the other, I scruple not to say, Virginia shall command my poor services." I struggled to contextualize this in a modern sense, and was only able to do so upon reflection on my own dual nationality. And I think perhaps Mr. Moon may also be in a unique position as a Korean-American, understand this conflict within Jeb and all Virginians at the time as well. I hold both American and Brazilian citizenship. I love Brazil. I love Portuguese. I love my culture, its food, its music, its land, my people. I love my country. However, I was born here, I was raised here, my family is here, my neighbors, my friends. Much of the goodness in my life has come from the United States. It is my home. I love my country. Like Jeb, should one of these attachments show to be incompatible with the other, my loyalty and heart will remain in the land of my family, my friends, and of my neighbors. They will remain with, I will remain with my home. This was my window into Jeb's mind as he pledged loyalty to home and family above all else. Those needing to look a young student of any background in the eye and justify the name of Jeb Stewart High School, I would say that they need not worry. Jeb should be judged by the content of his character, not the coat he wore. The Jeb that took a bullet to the chest for America is the same one that the New York Times, at the time a fiercely Unionist publication, praised and revered in subituary and tribute to him. A rare display for any such paper. The Jeb that protected the federal arsenal of Harpers Ferry heroically is the same one that Lincoln used as an example for his Union generals to emulate during the war. The wide-eyed, young, and brash West Point student is the same Jeb as the one heralded around the globe as a military genius and celebrated for his daring and bravery when encountering overwhelming odds in the Civil War. I learned this and a lot more in this great book about Jeb Stewart that had not been checked out from the Stewart High School library since the 1970s. I think the only thing keeping the students from being proud of Jeb Stewart is education about who the man was. If you cannot look a student in the eye and say this, and I will look in yours and say, "I am proud to have graduated from a high school, from an institution named after Jeb Stewart. He was a man of character and of qualities that all graduates from that institution should strive to embody. A name change would not only be fiscally irresponsible, but unwarranted. Jeb Stewart is someone our whole community can be proud of as Virginians and as Americans with just a little education." Thank you very much.
Hugh Stewart.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hugh Stewart. I am here to talk about the annual School Board Organization Arrangement, and something near and dear to all of your hearts, your salary. As you know, news reports have said that Fairfax, you have said that you told the board that we were tens of million dollars in the hole, and according to the Washington Post, people are being laid off. And yet, two weeks from now, you're going to take a vote on whether or not to spend over a million dollars to rename Jeb Stewart High School, and then go down that road with Lee, Shreve, Mosby, and perhaps others. It's going to be very costly. My question to you is, would you contribute your salaries to pay for it? Or not? And if not, where are you going to get the money? You've come to the taxpayers time and again, and people have realized that $2.5 billion is a lot of money. And if you take the money to rename this school, you're going to be taking it from other parts of the budget, for other needs, for other children. Okay? And if you really think this is going to be a panacea that's going to raise the achievement of Jeb Stewart by renaming it, I don't think you know the character of the school that well. But I'll tell you one thing, Jeb Stewart is a name that actually may be good for some of these students, because I think they can relate to him. When he was young, the last place he wanted to be was in school. He would rather be out riding, he would rather be out doing anything else. And when he did go to school, he was not the most gifted student. He would not be gifted and talented. But he learned to work hard. And when he got to West Point, he was finally able to get into the top third of his class when he graduated. He learned determination, perseverance, and not to quit. And those are values that I think the students at this school in particular can do well with. And I also think that perhaps it would be best if maybe we could just step back from the edge on this. This whole process has been rushed. I was on the ad hoc committee. I have two daughters at Jeb Stewart now, and I have a third child in the Fairfax school system. And it really is a shame that we have an ordinance that I think is so poorly drawn that it relies on a compelling need which no one has defined. And as I look at this body, I'm not sure all of you could define compelling need in the same way. I suggest it's worth going back to the drawing board, redrawing your regulation, have a thoughtful, well-defined, non-capricious, and non-vague statute from which to operate this process, and to take the whole county into consideration. Because I don't think the whole county has woken up to the cost. Thank you very much.
Sharice Glassman.
Good evening. I sat on the MSAOC, and also I was the former Chair of the NAACP. And I support the MSAOC, which is in order for tonight, and would like to say that the self-image of students is very important. George W. Bush said at the dedication ceremony of the African-American Museum, "Great nations do not hide its history. It faces its flaws and corrects them." Nineteen years after the Civil War, we have an opportunity to rebrand our history, honoring Jeb Stewart, actually ignoring slavery and what it actually stood for. When those men burned crosses, they were letting everyone know who was in charge. One story told, one story forgotten, purposefully. There are no markers for the many men who were hanged, and their necks were broken and killed. There are no markers for the many women who were raped systematically by their slave masters. But we each take our own journey on race. Can you really look into a student's eyes, a rising ninth grader who's getting ready to go to Jeb Stewart, and tell her that Jeb Stewart inspires her? Does this moment help her to see her potential? Does this moment help you to see your potential? Can you do it? No one said this would be easy. Oftentimes, the toughest things are not the easiest things to do. We elected you and endorsed you to do the right thing. This is not about blame. This is not about retaliation. Where a school system can acknowledge taking something away. We can actually make crooked what was once straight. History can't be changed, but we can put the, we cannot put the Confederacy on a pedestal. This is a bad prescription for our present. Asking us to drive by property in which we own seems perverse. We justify our silence and our actions that marinate in historical denial. Dr. King said, "Weight is almost never meant. We need to change now." But is this really about a name? Is this about attitudes? If we change the name and our attitudes don't change, this will all be in vain. We must create new symbols. We can do it together as one people. We come as equals. We must set the tone for the next 300 years. They should never be put on a pedestal. We must move past a painful part of our history. Anything less would fall short of uniting us as one people, one Fairfax. God bless the Commonwealth.
Thank you. It's my great pleasure to go to item 3.02, Student Representative Matters. I had the pleasure of sitting down with Ms. Vataconda recently, and I'm very, very impressed with her, as I'm sure everyone who has met her is. And so, it is my great pleasure to welcome you, Ms. Vataconda, and to have you start with your very first Student Representative Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. I'm so excited to be here. And for those of you who I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, my name is Nehirika Vataconda, and I have the distinct honor and privilege of serving as your 47th student representative to the school board. Before I announce my plans and priorities for the upcoming year, I would like to thank all the members of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. I am honored that all of you chose me to represent almost 188,000 students, from kindergarteners to seniors like myself across our county this past April, and I look forward to working with the SAC throughout my term. As your new student rep, I promise to serve as a liaison to all students across the county, and make sure that we, as the school board, continue to make sure students' voices are our priority in making policy decisions. That being said, I hope to talk to all of you over the upcoming year about what you think are the most pressing issues in your school, and see what great ideas students are already enacting through their student governments and other service activities. As I said at the SAC convention back in April, especially for high schoolers, I want to empower all of you to become problem solvers. So I want our communication to be a two-way street, so that I can hear about what you're doing to advance the causes you're passionate about, and then figure out how I and other members of the school board can work with you to address the concerns that you think are most pressing for our county. To that end, I have committed myself to visiting all high and secondary schools in the county at some point during the school year. I will also be frequently posting on my FCPS page so that you can hear what's going on and what students can do to help. If at any point during the year you would like to reach out to me and let me know how I'm doing, any ideas you have, please email me at nvataconda@fcps.edu. I'm currently working on appointments for student reps to all of our school board committees, so I'd love for all of you to reach out and apply for one of these positions. Moving on to what I hope to accomplish for the school year. My broad priorities for the school year include supporting student achievement while never wavering from our commitment to mental wellness, reducing student stress through comprehensive grading and workload reform, and making sure we are promoting equity in educational and extracurricular opportunities through the county. Within these areas, I would like to revise the grading policy put in place last year with student input to evaluate the implementation, particularly of the retake policy across schools and departments. Create workload policies that increase standardization and decrease student stress by allowing students to take charge of their schedules and work with teachers to balance their workloads. Partner with student governments to hold student-sponsored mental wellness activities with the help of the school board and outside nonprofits. I also hope to have a comprehensive program to review and identify how we can make sure our access to advanced academic programs, our academies, and TJHSST is more equitable for all students. And finally, I want to make sure opportunities within our education system are sensitive to socioeconomic status, so that our most at-risk students can continue to receive the world-class education offered by FCPS. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to serve all of you as FCPS student representative, and I look forward to the year ahead.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. And now, before I read the next agenda item, I would like to say a few words as the outgoing School Board Chair. There's a traditional wish: May you live in interesting times. Some say it's a blessing, others say it's a curse. In any event, our board has certainly lived through some interesting times in this last year. I have been honored to serve as your chair, even as I wish for all of a slightly less interesting times in the coming year. We certainly are seeing transition at tonight's meeting. My last is Chair, and Dr. Braybrand's first is Superintendent. It's fitting that our superintendent and the new board leadership will start the new year together. Particularly want to thank all of my colleagues for their very hard work this last year, as well as for their support, advice, and thoughtfulness during my tenure as Chair. I appreciate everyone's patience as well. And I particularly want to thank Mrs. Strauss. Her wisdom and guidance, I could not have done this without her, and I could not have asked for a better partner. So thank you so much, Mrs. Strauss. Dr. Lockhart, it has been a true pleasure working closely with you, and thank you again for your leadership. Dr. Braybrand, I am very happy to have been a part of the board that launched you into your superintendency, and I know we are in very good hands. And of course, none of us could have done this work and ever do this work without our stellar school board staff. I have been so fortunate to have the tireless support of Clerk Eileen Mulberg, and Deputy Clerks Bev Medeja, and Benedicto, and of course, the amazing Kathy Partlow, my longtime executive administrative assistant, who has been outstanding, as well as they have all been very kind. So thank you. As I leave this role, I would like to repeat something that I said when I came into this role. We have a board of very smart, hard-working, dedicated individuals who believe deeply in the mission of our school system, and as well in the children we serve. We may not always agree, but no one can doubt our commitment to service. I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you in this role, and I have learned a lot from each of you as well. And I can say absolutely that I do feel blessed by the experience. So thank you. Thank you so much. Now, we go to Agenda Item 4.01, the Annual Organizational Motion. Section 22.1-76 of the Code of Virginia specifies that at the annual organizational meeting, a school board shall elect one of its members to serve as chairman, and may elect one of its members to serve as vice chairman, both for one-year term, and shall also approve other appointments and designations of responsibility necessary for board operations during the year. I will now call on Superintendent Braybrand to conduct the selection process for the School Board Chair for the next year. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Ms. Evans, and good evening, everybody. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I nominate Janie Strauss for Chairman of the Board.
Is there a second?
I second.
Janie Strauss has been nominated as Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the motion before the board is to elect Janie Strauss as Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. I call on those members who nominated Janie for comments first.
Thank you again, Dr. Braybrand. Before I speak about Janie Strauss, let me first thank you, Ms. Evans, for your service this past year. Having served as the Chair before, I know how difficult the job of Chair can be. Leading the other, working with the other 11 school board members can be a challenge, and I know. But you've done a one heck of a job, and I want to thank you for your patience, for your dedication, for your service and commitment. Having said that, I'm happy to send Mrs. Strauss to do that difficult job for the school year 2017 and 2018. Mrs. Strauss has been a member of the Fairfax County School Board nearly 24 years, first appointed in 1981 as a large member, and subsequently elected six times to represent the Drainsfield District. All of Fairfax County has benefited from her exceptional wisdom, global perspective, sincere devotion, and tireless dedication. On many levers, Mrs. Strauss has been active in education for close to 50 years. As a teacher, as a parent of four Fairfax County public schools graduates, a grandmother of two grandchildren in our school system, as a PTA president, as an active member of Fairfax County Council of PTAs, and of course, as a distinguished school board member. Mrs. Strauss was the Chair for the School Board in 2001, 2002... Mrs. Strauss was the Chair for the School Board in 2001, 2011, and Vice Chair in 2000 and 2016. Along the way, she chaired innumerable committees, participated in countless debates, and brought civility and compromise to a wide spectrum of topics. Mrs. Strauss is calm but firm. She listens well and knows exactly when to interject a good point. She gets the big picture. She believes that we must keep our highly regarded public schools strong. We must maintain our rigorous programs for all students in the STEM fields, the arts, humanities, and athletics. She also believes that while we must continuously evaluate programs, shedding what is no longer needed or effective, we must understand how to prepare our children for their future. Their success will come from what they know, but what they can do with what they know. Janie Strauss is a lifelong learner and a lifelong teacher. With the experience she has amassed and the calm, instructive demeanor that is her hallmark, Mrs. Strauss will be an incredible asset to our new Superintendent, Dr. Braybrand, working side by side with him for the Fairfax County Public Schools. She has been my respected and esteemed colleague for many years, and therefore, it is my honor and my pleasure to nominate Janie Strauss to Chair of the Fairfax County School Board for the 2017 and 2018 school year.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I am thrilled to second this nomination of Mrs. Strauss. I won't repeat the fine words that Mr. Moon has put forth. He's absolutely right in what he said. But I will repeat one thing about what a great partner Mrs. Strauss has been in this last year as Vice Chair with her wisdom and her great perspective. And as Mr. Moon mentioned, you know, her ability to stay calm in the face of any eventuality is a great trait. I think that the fact that Mrs. Strauss is our longest-serving member will serve her well, particularly as we go into a new era with a new Superintendent. And in this coming year, I think that Mrs. Strauss will be able to assure us of a very smooth transition, and I just look forward very much to her continuing leadership. So thank you, and I welcome your leadership.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, you had a comment?
Just wanted to also echo the remarks of my colleagues and to just state that Mrs. Strauss's leadership in this transition period is very welcomed, especially because of her breadth of experience, but also her willingness to take time to bring others along. I had the opportunity of sitting next to Mrs. Strauss when I first came on board, and she knows that I tend to want to jump to the end pretty quickly, and she was a very calming influence. So I always think it's, it will be a welcome transition, although one that will be bittersweet to see Sandy transition out of that role.
Ms. Cofax?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Janie, I often call on you when I need a historical perspective, when I need a balanced perspective, or when I need to vent. So I appreciate your guidance in all of those areas, your wisdom, and I have been a benefactor of your leadership from the start on this Board, and I look forward to your leadership as the Chair of our Board again. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I think it's appropriate that once a year, when we're making these choices, we take a little time to reflect and to send the new leadership off with a "thank you" and "good luck." And I just, and Ms. Evans, I will start by just saying I really enjoyed having you as a partner last year when I was Chair and you were my Vice Chair. I knew by the end of that year that you were going to improve on my service in many ways, and you have. I really, really appreciate the year that you've spent. It has been a busy and challenging year, and I don't know if you felt this way, but every once in a while, I would think, wouldn't it be great if we could just set an agenda for the year of feel-good, easily-delivered goals, right? That would be great. But as any teacher, you know, working with children out there knows, it never works out that way, you know? This is a tough business. And as the politically-elected, policy-setting group in this school system, we are supposed to take on tough issues. That's our job. Some of those issues will feel divisive and are not likely to make everyone happy. So that's the tough part of it. So it's not whether we will consider tough political decisions, but how we do that. And I want to thank you, Sandy. I think you have been the leader that we needed this year in this very busy, challenging year. You've been selfless, hardworking, thoughtful, analytical, committed to transparency, and the full participation of every Board member and every community member who steps forward to be heard and be involved. And you show everyone the same respect. And Janie Strauss is our, I'm so glad that you're stepping in, is our living history along with Mr. Moon. We are very lucky to have people on the Board who we can just pick up the phone and turn to and get the history. I think, Janie, you have shown so much patience over the years, I know, with me. New people, you have to be very patient with our learning curve. Things take us a while. But I have always appreciated your support. I know the Board will be in good hands, and I just want to thank you for your remarkable commitment to this Board and this school system and this community.
Ms. Schultz?
So I want to explain, I'm not going to be voting for Ms. Strauss tonight, but I'm not going to be voting against her either. I do think that there is a concern that just because you have a lot of experience doing Board work, it doesn't necessarily offer the best lens. And this is a conversation that I had with Ms. Strauss, so this is nothing I didn't say to her. I do say to the community that for the situation that we find ourselves in, whether it's reflecting how we spend our money, and whether or not we do zero-based budgeting, how long it takes us to get to discipline reform, or later start times, or to hire an auditor and get that up and running, sometimes it requires a leaning forward and to not necessarily do things the way that they have been done. And I do, and I have expressed to Ms. Strauss, that I look forward to this tenure maybe being a little bit more representative of some of those changes. That will help, I think, the division. It will help some of the people in the audience holding different signs who feel like you're in a position because of something the Board either did or didn't do. And I do think it requires us to stretch as a Board and potentially get outside of our comfort zone. The role of the Chair has been held by only one party. I wasn't going to speak, but my colleague, Ms. Hines, noted that we're politically elected. We're not supposed to be politically elected, and that's part of the problem. So I hope that we reflect as a Board the full talent and treasure that each of us brings and take advantage of that, because I think you all, as employees of the school system, as parents in the school system, as taxpayers who are deeply vested in a world-class school system, benefit by the full development of each Board member according to their abilities to serve and potentially move this Board forward from potentially some of the things that we've done in the past. So I'll be abstaining.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Like my other colleagues, I do want to first extend my deep appreciation to my colleague, Ms. Sandy Evans, for her work as Chair. Sandy, you and I have a long history together before joining the Board as community advocates. And the five and a half years that I've had the chance to serve with you, it's been a real pleasure to now have benefited from your leadership this past year. I think Ms. Hines captured really the most wonderful qualities that you brought to the leadership role, so I won't repeat them, but I will just say thank you for helping our Board, I think, move forward and make progress in opportunities for all Board members to really bring their skills and talents to the work that we do. And that has been really a wonderful memory for me in this past year, so thank you. To Ms. Strauss, I share Mr. Moon's sentiments. It is a difficult position to serve as Chair, and I appreciate your willingness to take on the remarkable time commitment that comes with serving as Chair. And I do hope that our Board will benefit from your leadership, and our new Vice Chair, whose election will be right after yours. And I really do hope that some of the work that Ms. Evans really helped lead in this past year of really creating an environment where all Board members feel valued and feel that we get a chance to bring our skills to benefit the work of the Board, will continue in that forward progress. So I will be supporting your chairmanship. And to the audience and anyone who's followed this Board, at least in the two terms that I've been serving, it's always a pleasure when you end up seeing our Board be this united. I think it speaks well to us tonight.
There are no more comments, then we'll proceed with the vote, which requires a majority of votes from Board members present and voting. The motion before the Board is that Janie Strauss be elected Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and saying "Aye." That would be Hines, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Cofax, McElveen. Do we have those opposed? Those abstaining? Ms. Schultz? The motion passes. At this time, I am pleased to introduce the new Chair of the Fairfax County School Board, Janie Strauss.
I am deeply honored to be entrusted to the care of our School Board and to be, well, we used to say in the olden days, "the herder of the cats," very beloved colleagues. First, I do want to also thank Ms. Evans. You have been an excellent Chairperson. You are patient, you are kind, you are so well-organized and always fair. And I must say, you have really worked hard to make sure that all of our colleagues feel included and have an opportunity to speak. Takes a lot of patience, and you have done that so well. And I think that it has improved the sense of participation by all of our colleagues. And so I'm very grateful to you for setting that as a standard. I also respect your deep commitment to all of the children in our school system and your constant search for finding the right path forward, so that all of our youngsters, all of our families, and all of our schools are well-served. It has been a pleasure to serve with you, and I have learned many things from you. So I hope to be as good as you have been. Dr. Braybrand, oh my, we are so pleased that you accepted our invitation to become our next Superintendent. We have confidence in your ability to expertly lead Fairfax County Public Schools. We know that you will ensure the daily success of our fine teachers, support staff, so that our children have good learning opportunities, and you have said many times how dedicated you are to continuing the excellence of the school system. One other piece: Your optimism, your enthusiasm is such a welcome addition. I remember when we, the first night you came, I think we could have had a receiving line with warm handshakes and hugs all around. We so like your spirit, Dr. Braybrand. So thank you very much. To my colleagues on the School Board, I welcome this opportunity to serve you as the facilitator of our agenda. We work together as a Board. We do have difficult decisions to make, we always do. You're right, Ms. Hines. We often have to make very hard decisions, and it is important that every voice is heard. Everybody has an opportunity. Each one of you was elected to represent our children, our families, and the residents that we ultimately serve. So I look forward to us working together. I respect everyone's deep sense of commitment to every child. We may disagree sometimes on how we think we should go forward, but it is more because we are so committed to our children. And we will have different ideas, and that's fine. It is through rigorous debate and conversation that we ultimately end up in a better situation. I also want to say that as the facilitator of our agenda, I'm committed to working with our fine staff, our leadership team, our teachers, support staff, our children. Our public institutions and our public schools are only as good as we make them and as we push ourselves to do a better job and to get our whole community to become truly believers in public schools and supportive of our children. It is when we succeed. So we are a team. We're a very large team. And we are good speakers, and we like to talk for a long time. But we will end up in a much better place. So I am honored, I am pleased, to facilitate our agenda and our conversation. So going forward, we will now elect our Vice Chair, our partner in our facilitation. So at this time, I will open the floor to nominations for Vice Chair of the School Board. I will call on Ms. Darnar Cofax.
I nominate Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. McLaughlin? Okay. Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the motion before the Board is to elect Karen Corbett Sanders as Vice Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. I will call on those members who nominated. Ms. Corbett Sanders for comments. Cofax?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Corbett Sanders joined our Board two years ago with a background in international business management, as a community advocate for health and education issues, a former PTA President, and the mother of two daughters, both recent graduates of FCPS. She has a bachelor's degree from Notre Dame University and a master's from Boston University. I had the pleasure of meeting Karen many years ago when we both were serving as members of FCPS's Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee. From the beginning, I admired her work ethic, professionalism, and her ability to manage meetings with complex topics and meetings where participants shared wide and varying opinions. On our Board, Karen has served as the School Liaison to the Fairfax County Planning Commission, as the Federal Legislative Liaison, and as a member of our Audit Committee. I am confident that Ms. Corbett Sanders' professional and personal background will serve our Board well, and it is my honor to offer her name as the Vice Chair of the Fairfax County School Board for the 2017-18 school year.
Ms. McLaughlin?
In not only echoing the words of praise from my colleague, Ms. Darnar Cofax, I would also like to add that during Ms. Corbett Sanders' year-and-a-half tenure to date serving on the School Board, she has demonstrated unique and essential characteristics that we need to help strengthen our School Board. Number one, Ms. Corbett Sanders, your incredible ability to assume positive intentions of all 11 of your colleagues has really been, I think, a hallmark of what you've brought to your time here. And when you replaced our beloved Dan Stork, none of us knew how fortunate we would be that you would carry really the marker that distinguished him as well for the Mount Vernon District. Secondly, you really do seek to build consensus through collaboration with, again, all 11 of your colleagues, and that has been serving us very well in your time here on the Board. Number three, I really appreciate that you treat all of us with deep respect and incredible kindness. And as Ms. Strauss noted earlier, we sometimes have really difficult And as Ms. Strauss noted earlier, we sometimes have really difficult decisions before us, and our passions run deep, and that is why we serve on this Board, because of our deep passion and commitment. But your willingness to always create a setting where I have felt so comfortable to approach you on any issue and to actually have sometimes really intense debate, I never worry for a moment about our ability to leave a conversation with that same degree of respect and admiration for one another. And I believe that really serves our Board well in that you extend that to everyone. And finally, your remarkable executive skills and the leadership qualities that you developed in over two decades with Verizon. I have truly benefited from that corporate experience that you bring and the knowledge of how you've helped us already in the last year and a half to look at how we can improve our Board work, how we can improve our examination of the limited funds we have in running a $2.8 billion operation. Really, when I think about how well you will complement the veteran leadership that Ms. Strauss brings, I think together you will be really a remarkable team together. And I will close with saying that I do hope that both you and Ms. Strauss will look for ways to continuously improve on the work that the Chair and Vice Chair do in ensuring that all Board members do feel that they have an opportunity to bring their skills and strengths to the Board work and continue to look for ways to keep the Board informed of the most important issues that are affecting the system so that we can all be knowledgeable and best represent not only our districts but the county as a whole. So I encourage all of my colleagues to enthusiastically support your nomination.
Ms. Evans.
I will just briefly say how enthusiastically I will support this nomination. When Mrs. Corbett Sanders came on the Board a year and a half ago, I think she practically defined, hit the ground running with her ability to just jump right in and absorb many complex topics right away. We have a lot of reading on this Board, whether it's for Board meetings or work sessions, and a lot of times it's a pleasure, but it's a lot. And I don't think in Karen's time on the Board, I've called her and said, you know, "Did you see this item on page 163 of the 300-page report?" Or, you know, "Did you catch this tidbit in the infogram?" She's always seen it, you know, she's always read it, she always knows what I'm talking about. It's almost, I think it's going to be a challenge for me to find something that, you know, you haven't picked up on, so I'll try to do that this year, just, you know, when you're at least expecting it. But I will say, I think Mrs. Corbett Sanders is indeed a great consensus builder, as well as being very analytical and organized. So I very much look forward to working with you in this role.
I would also like to support and thank Ms. Corbett Sanders for your willingness to step up and to be our Vice Chair. As Ms. Evans indicated, your ability to research and bring information to the Board and share necessary details and other research that we need is wonderful. You are a very thorough and thoughtful and well-organized person and a tremendous asset to this Board. So I look forward to your partnership and your work on our behalf, and you bring great skill to the Board. So thank you very much. Elizabeth Schultz.
Yes, so I want to say that I'm going to enthusiastically support Ms. Corbett Sanders. I don't know if it's a compliment or it's a quirk that you and I enjoyed spending so much time with, I don't know, 700 pages of budget and delving into it. And the amount of time that we spent talking to each other and really looking at line items, trying to be more holistic about our approach about the budget, is really what's needed. That is a skill set that you can't create from thin air. It's amount of time and dedication that very few understand. Ms. Strauss mentioned the amount of reading that you do as a Board member. The work that the public sees us do at the Board table, I don't even know if we could describe this as 1% of what we do with the amount of time that we spend behind the scenes. And it does take an extraordinary amount of effort to say, "I'm willing to sort of do the heavy lifting." Now, whether or not we follow through with heavy lifting becomes, you know, the Paul Harvey rest of the story. But the fact that you're willing to spend the time with staff, ask difficult questions that, you know, are sometimes uncomfortable, is the way in which we stretch this Board that I was talking about earlier, and so I look forward to supporting you.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Just quickly, I'm very grateful to you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, for stepping up to do this. It is extra work, but you are not afraid of work. I think it's true that doing your homework does shorten the learning curve. We have seen that. You have learned things very quickly. I have really enjoyed serving with you on the Audit Committee, in particular, I know I have relied on you. I think, you know, we talk about how bringing a business background to this Board is helpful, and you really do that. I mean, I think you have, as people have already said, you have a tremendous breadth of experience and depth as well. And I just, you know, I want to make sure I'm not misunderstood when I talk about being politically responsible to the community. I'm not talking about partisanship, and I don't think you look at it that way either. But we are politically elected, we represent the values of those who have elected us here, and that's our job. And it is a different job than what a lot of other people in the school system have. And I think you bear that very well, in a very well-balanced way, and that's what we have to do on the School Board, because we're not supposed to be partisan, and I don't see that in your work. So thanks so much. I look forward to working with you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, then we'll proceed with the vote, which requires a majority of votes from those Board members present and voting. The motion before the Board is that Karen Corbett Sanders be elected Vice Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. You can vote yourself. And that motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you are our new Vice Chair. Would you like to have a moment to speak?
First, I want to thank both Sandy and Janie for their excellent leadership of the past year. It has been an incredibly challenging year with the unexpected departure of Dr. Garza and the ensuing search, the recruitment of a new Auditor General, and a very tough budget year. You and Janie have been steadfast partners in keeping the School Board moving forward with a full plate of issues, and I appreciate both of your willingness to listen to concerns and the passions each of us have for all of the students in this county. I am very happy and excited to be partnering with Janie in the next year. It's truly a great honor, and I am humbled by the support of each and every one of you on this Board. I am committed to bringing my expertise or my experience in both the business environment as well as a community advocate. I know that each of us strives to build consensus, and I am committed to building consensus on this Board. I'm also committed to embracing the spirit that Dr. Braybrandt, you have started off with, which is one of servant leadership. It's one that I truly believe in, and I think it's one that we as a Board share and can model more effectively every day. And so I look forward to working with both Janie and you to ensure that the Fairfax County Public School Board is a model School Board that ensures that Fairfax County Public Schools are a beacon where everybody wants to send their children to school. And so thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Congratulations to Ms. Corbett Sanders, my partner. Okay, and now I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a motion. This is an organizational arrangement motion that must be done by code at this meeting. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I move that the School Board authorize organizational arrangements and appointments as follows. Designate the 2017-2018 calendar of regular business meetings, which are typically held on Thursdays. The Board's calendar of meeting dates will be based on the school year and will be published in July as detailed in Attachment A of the Agenda Item. Special meetings, Board Committee work sessions, and other special functions will also be scheduled. Liaisons and committees will be organized to support the Board's work. Committees of three Board members consider student disciplinary cases in closed meetings, typically on Tuesdays. The Board does not customarily meet in August. Two, set the salary of Board members at $32,000 per year, and that of the Board Chairman at $34,000, and reimburse all Board members for travel expenses in the conduct of official business, including attendance at meetings, at the same rate as employees of the Board. Three, compensate the student representative for attendance at public meetings not to exceed $50 per day and reimburse for related travel expenses at the same rate as employees of the Board. Four, appoint Stephen Lockard, Deputy Superintendent, to serve as the Superintendent's designee to attend any meeting of the School Board that the Superintendent cannot attend. Five, appoint Eileen Mulberg as Clerk of the School Board, and Anne Benedetto and Beverly Medea as Deputy Clerks of the School Board, each with corporate surty bond as required by the Code of Virginia. Six, appoint Deputy Clerks of the School Board for the limited purpose of signing titles to School Board vehicles and counter-signing payment warrants as detailed in Attachment B of the Agenda Item. Seven, appoint Agents and Deputy Agents of the School Board to examine, approve, and order payment of financial obligations of the School Board, and to approve disbursements made from all petty cash funds as detailed in Attachment B of the Agenda Item. Eight, appoint Agents and Deputy Agents of the School Board to examine, approve, and order payment only in connection with the Educational Employees Supplemental Retirement System of Fairfax County, ERFC, as detailed in Attachment B of the Agenda Item. Nine, authorize the Chairman and Clerk to sign all legal documents for the Board other than those requiring the signature of some other officers, officer or officers, and authorize the Vice Chairman to sign in the absence of the Chairman and the Deputy Clerks in the absence of the Clerk. Ten, authorize Stephen Lockard, Deputy Superintendent, and Susan Quinn, Chief Operating Officer, to execute official documents, including those relating to state, federal, and impact aid, requiring the Superintendent's signature, and those relating to the Virginia Department of Education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the Division Superintendent, effective through July 2018. Eleven, retain the following outside law firms as assigned and managed by the Office of Division Counsel. The firm of Hunton &amp; Williams to provide general legal advice and litigation services. The firm of Blankenship &amp; Keith to provide general and special education advice and litigation services. The firm of Littler-Mendelson to provide workers' compensation services, and such other firms as determined to be necessary from time to time.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. McElveen. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your?
Nothing further.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Then all those in favor of the long organizational motion as read, please raise your hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We did not quite finish our closed meeting, but we will confirm action taken in closed meeting at least partially, and we will be returning at the end of the meeting to finish the work. So this is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. And I call on Ms. Darren Kofax for a motion. This is M2.
Yes, ma'am. I move to grant in part the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted and mistreated another student and who also possessed a knife at school, and to modify the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Ms. Schultz, second? I'm sorry, maybe this is M1. I'm sorry.
Did I do the wrong one?
I'm sorry. Pardon. We need, point of order. I think we need... Yes, that's fine. We'll... Shall we proceed with M2? Proceed with M2, because we started that. A second. Okay. All those in favor of M2? Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Darren Kofax, McElveen, opposed. Abstention, Ms. Hines, that motion carries. Okay, then we need to return to M1. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute, on behalf of the Board, contracts for members of the Leadership Team as discussed in closed meeting.
Second by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? That's Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Darren Kofax, McElveen, opposed. Abstention, Ms. Hines, that motion carries. Thank you. And we will be returning to finish the rest of our closed session after the meeting. The next action item is Item 4.03, Human Resources Advisory Committee Charge. I call on Ms. Hines for the motion.
Thank you. I move that the School Board approve the HRAC charge as detailed in the Agenda Item.
Is there a second? A second? Second by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, thank you. The Board has been talking about this for quite a while, and now we have shifted from our Human Relations Advisory Committee to now Human Resources Advisory Committee, for those who haven't been following. And it will have a different focus and therefore a different charge. I wanted to thank Dr. Ramey for all of his help putting together the charge. After all, Dr. Ramey is in charge of HR, and so it's very important that our School Board Advisory Committee work closely with Dr. Ramey and be of service to the work that he wants to do. So I hope that... We have had a lot of time to talk about this as a Board. I hope my colleagues are ready to support it.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
Okay. See no other questions to speak. We will vote on the motion to approve the HRAC charge as detailed in the Agenda, in the Agenda Item. All those in favor? That vote is unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Next is Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval with the Board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through Board review, and documentation has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the meeting. First item, 5.01, approve the minutes of the May 11th, May 25th, June 8th, and June 22nd, 2017, regular School Board meetings. 5.02, approve the revisions to Policy 2245.2, home instruction requirements and part-time enrollment options as detailed in the Agenda Item. 5.03, amend its employment contract with Dr. Scott Braybrandt and to authorize the Chairman to execute the amended contract. 5.04, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the Agenda Item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. First, I call on Dr. Braybrandt to introduce the FY 2017 Final Budget Review Presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I'd like to introduce the Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services, Kristin Michael, to present the Year-End Budget. Before she begins, yes, before you begin, I want to thank you and your team. I know the budget cycle never seems to end, but honestly, your staff has worked tremendously hard to provide transparent and solid information to the School Board and to the community so that we can make sound decisions together. So thank you very much, Kristin, and I just want to give you a round of applause for your hard work.
And before we begin, remind my colleagues and those watching that this year-end budget will have extensive discussion at our work session on Monday. So if people have clarifying questions, that's fine tonight, but you will have an opportunity for a more extensive conversation on Monday. Ms. Michael, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you. Okay, there we go. I'd like to begin my presentation this evening by thanking all of the people that worked so diligently to help us end our fiscal year on a very positive note. I appreciate all of the efforts and the incredible collaboration from our schools and departments at fiscal year-end, and I'm also grateful for all of the outstanding work and tremendous efforts from the staff and the financial services. I truly thank them for this year-end review. I truly thank them for this year-end review. This is the final budget review for FY 17, and it's also the first time that the FY 18 budget will be revised. The budget for the current fiscal year is then updated at each quarterly budget review. Our FY 17 results are still subject to the annual audit by the external auditors, and any adjustments from that audit will be reflected in our mid-year budget review in December. With the exception of the Adult and Community Education Fund, all the funds ended this year with a positive balance. First, I'll review the School Operating Fund, and then I'll review the other funds. During this presentation and on the agenda, for the last few years, we've been using common terminology between county and schools that was developed and recommended by the Joint Budget Development Committee. In the School Operating Fund, we ended this year with an available balance of $33.9 million, and that's 1.2% of our third quarter budget for expenditures. While this available balance is similar in total amount to last year, it's different. FCPS received $1.3 million in revenue from FEMA for the snowstorm from 2016. Yes, we finally received some reimbursement from that storm. In addition to the additional revenue, both from FEMA, and I'll talk some more about revenue from the state, our commitments and carryover in FY 17 are 11% lower than last year, and I'll talk more about that in the expenditure section. I'm going to begin on page 1 at the top with our FY 17 actual revenue. So, funding from the state, when we combine Items A and B together, sales tax and state aid, reflect an increase of $3 million, or approximately one-half of 1% over our FY 17 third quarter budget estimate. Sales tax revenue in Item A is projected to be $1.3 million lower than the estimate from our third quarter budget review. The final sales tax payment for FY 17 will not be received until July after the fiscal year ends. In Item B, we have state aid. State aid reflects an increase of $4.3 million as compared to our FY 17 third quarter budget review. This final payment from the state is based on our actual ADM, or Average Daily Membership, from March 31st. Our actual ADM for March 31st was higher than the ADM used to project the budget, resulting in more basic aid. In Item C, as compared to the FY 17 third quarter budget review, our federal revenue reflects a decrease of $6.1 million, and that's due to unspent multi-year grant awards, primarily IDEA, which will be carried forward into FY 18, combined with impact aid revenue being 0.6 million more than projected, and yes, FCPS receiving that funding of $1.3 million from FEMA for that inclement weather from fiscal year 2016. Lastly, based on our actual receipts, our other categories of revenue in Item D, including fees, miscellaneous revenue exceeded our projections by 1.8 million. So, in total, our revenue variance is $1.3 million, and that means we received 99.95% of our revenue estimate. If we move on to the top of Page 2, excluding our unspent multi-year grant awards, and after funding the flexibility reserve of $8 million, the fuel contingency reserve of $2 million, our outstanding encumbered obligations, our multi-year projects and school carryover, and critical needs carryover, in total, our expenditures are $27.4 million less than projected. So, that expenditure variance totals just 1.0% of our third quarter budget, and it's comprised primarily of salaries and benefits. Our salary variance was $14.9 million, or 0.9%, and then when you combine our benefit variance of $10 million, or 1.4%, you end up with that net variance of that 1.0%. In all of our other accounts, the variance was $2.4 million, or 0.7%, and that's primarily coming from utilities. So, when we look at our variance in salaries and benefits, again, it was lower than the previous year. So, as we've worked each year to review our projection methodology, this variance represents just over two days of payroll. Because we've already budgeted for increasing savings for turnover in our FY 18 budget and reduced our budget for benefits, we'll continue to closely monitor our compensation accounts in the FY 18 budget. Comparing to past final budget reviews, our expenditure variance has decreased from 1.5% in FY 14 to 1.2% in FY 15, 1.1% in FY 16, and now down to 1.0% in FY 17. Before moving on to Item B, I would like to review commitments and carryover, which are listed under Item A on the top of this page. First, we have the School Board Flexibility Reserve. That $8 million in funding is available to meet unforeseen circumstances that occur during the school year. At each year-end, any unused portion has been carried forward to the next fiscal year with school board's approval. The second item, our fuel contingency of $2 million, was implemented as part of our FY 16 final budget review. Fuel rates in FY 17 were reduced, and we created a contingency to help mitigate any rate fluctuations. So, we've continued that practice in FY 18. Our outstanding encumbered obligation, those are undelivered orders for goods that were ordered and not received before June 30th, was $24.2 million. That is $5.1 million, or 17% lower than the prior year, and it's significantly lower than both our five and 10-year averages. Examples of undelivered orders as of June 30th include buses, computers, and some instructional supplies. The next item, schools and projects of school and multi-year project carryover totals $24.8 million. This is also a decrease. The decrease was 0.8 million, or 3% as compared to last year. Currently, schools automatically carry over up to 25% of their non-personal items. And then examples of our multi-year projects include the replacement of our bus radios, the upgrade of our human resources and payroll system Lawson, and also the replacement of our legacy budgeting system. Providing schools and departments on a limited basis with the ability to carry over funding allows them to develop multi-year funding plans, for example, replacing technology which may not be able to be completed in one fiscal year. This practice eliminates the use-it-or-lose-it approach that often results when carryover funding is not available. Each year, we do review our carryover practices to determine if adjustments are needed. In FY 18, this carryover funding will help mitigate the reductions that schools and departments took, including a 10% reduction to schools' instructional supply accounts. Lastly, department critical need carryover totals $4.9 million, and that's a $1 million, or 16% reduction from last year. Examples of department critical needs carryover are funding to replace a failing HVAC system at the Lorton Transportation Center, funding for industry certification tests that came from the state in late June and will be used next year to cover the cost of those tests for students, support for the classification study still underway, and also funding to support recruiting at historically black colleges and universities. When we combine the reduction in expenditures from our federal multi-year unspent grant awards of $7.8 million, our total expenditure variance is $35.2 million. Then, as a result of combining that with our revenue variance, our total available funding from FY 17 is $33.9 million. Moving on to Page 3. Page 3 includes the revenue revisions to our FY 18 budget based on all of that FY 17 information that I just reviewed. Overall, our revenue adjustments total $105.7 million. That reflects the impact of commitments and carryovers, as well as the expenditure adjustments that I'll review next. So, at the top of Page 4, we have the expenditure adjustments that begin for FY 18. So, the first items, A, B, and C, are appropriation for federal multi-year grant awards and two new grant awards from IDEA for FY 18. Then Item D reflects our commitments and carryover that I just talked about. The remaining expenditure adjustments reflect all of the new or increased expending that we're recommending for FY 18. So, Items G and H are needs that were identified as part of the FY 18 budget adoption. Item G adds $1.7 million to the staffing reserve. As part of the FY 18 approved budget adoption, a follow-on motion was approved to prioritize year-end funding to mitigate the impact of class size increases. This funding will add 20 positions to the staffing reserve and provide schools with support for large class sizes. If these positions are not needed, the funding will be returned at a quarterly budget review. Item H provides a placeholder of $3.3 million for an employee bonus as also directed by a follow-on motion. Multiple options for a one-time bonus for employees who did not receive a salary increase as a result of the compensation adjustments included in the FY 18 budget will be presented at Monday's work session. Item I funds the fourth and final year of continuing the development of languages through content curriculum that was initially funded at the FY 14 final budget review. Item J is funding to continue FCPS's efforts to recruit and retain employees. In total, $0.5 million is recommended for recruitment and retention initiatives, and this is continuing the funding that was first allocated on a one-time basis at a quarterly budget review in FY 17. This one-time funding of $0.5 million would help us with both employee recruitment and retention, so we recommend maintaining that same level of funding. Following these expenditure adjustments, we have recommended adjustments that impact transfers to other funds. So, at the top of Page 6, Item A reflects a continuation of our efforts to address the backlog of major maintenance using one-time funding. Funding totaling $3.6 million was eliminated during the adoption of the FY 14 budget. At that time, FCPS implemented a process of restoring that funding each year using funding available at year-end. So, this recommendation for FY 18 would represent the fifth consecutive time that year-end funding has been used to maintain the funding for our major maintenance activities. Item B is funding of $0.6 million for the Adult and Community Education Fund. The Adult and Community Education Fund ended FY 17 with a shortfall of $0.6 million, primarily due to lower projected tuition revenue. In FY 18, ACE will take actions to ensure that the revenue and expenditures are balanced. Those actions could include items like restructuring course offerings, increasing tuition, streamlining administration, or reducing staff. So, to support ACE's restructuring efforts, we recommend a one-time transfer of $0.6 million. In total, all of these adjustments to dispersments are $81.6 million. The remaining fund of funding available, $24.1 million, we recommend to be set aside for the FY 19 beginning balance. This does reflect an initial shortfall of $9.4 million as compared to the beginning balance funding used in our FY 18 budget. But any savings identified at the quarterly budget reviews could help to reduce this gap in beginning balance funding for FY 19. So, in terms of the other funds, they begin at the top of Page 8. Again, as I noted earlier, with the exception of ACE, all of our other funds performed as projected and ended the year with a positive balance. I'd just like to highlight a few of those items. In our Food and Nutrition Services Fund, I'm absolutely thrilled to report that their tremendous efforts, again, increased their revenue and decreased their costs, resulting in their reserve balance increasing to $16.5 million. In the ACE Fund, as I noted, they ended the year with a deficit of $0.6 million. So, as part of the FY 18 budget, total receipts and transfers are being reduced by 8.1% and actual expenditures were also 1.6 lower than our third quarter budget review. Plans are underway, as I noted earlier, to secure the financial stability of this fund, and as a result, we've adjusted both revenue and expenditure variances, and will continue to work on a plan to ensure that this fund is fiscally self-sustaining. In our Grants Fund for FY 18, the budget is increasing to both new and revised grant awards that are carrying forward from multi-year grants. In our Insurance Fund, our workers' compensation expenditures increased, and in our Health Fund, our premium stabilization reserve for FY 17 increased to $48.8 million. We will regularly continue to monitor our insurance and our health fund expenditures in our reserve balances. Then lastly, in our Trust Fund, as occurs each year, for both ERFC and OPEB, are adjustments from the final investment activities don't get processed until after the end of our fiscal year. So, due to the timing of those results, they're not reflected on this Agenda Item. The very last thing in the Agenda Item shows a summary of our grant activities for the fiscal year. So, we have an upcoming work session that's scheduled for Monday, July 17th. At that work session, we'll be happy to answer any questions on this agenda, and we'll also present multiple options for providing our employees with a bonus who didn't receive a salary increase as a result of the FY 18 budget. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present to you the FY 17 Final Budget Review.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Ms. Schultz?
So, I know that you've received a lot of questions, Ms. Michael, from a number of us on the board, but just for the record, and I know we're going to go into this in further detail on Monday, how many employees were included in the BA frees with the change in the salary scale? How many employees did that affect?
So, on Monday, we will, just as you said, go through this entire thing. When we look at the scale change in terms of the bachelor's degree lane and the employees that were impacted, there were 461 individuals impacted on the BA lanes as a result of the new salary scale.
And what was the average tenure for those 461 employees?
So, the impact in the salary scale, which we'll go over Monday, reduced the number of steps on our bachelor's degree lanes down to 19, being the top step. So, they would be employees that have more than that many years of service.
So, I'll just prepare my colleagues. It is my expectation for our next business meeting to work with the finance staff to put forward a budget amendment to restore this money, and it's probably not going to be comfortable because I'm going to...[1523.30][1523.30](APPLAUSE).
Ms. Schultz, can you continue?
And I'm happy... I'll be happy to talk with each one of you because, you know, I like to put together a menu of options. But when I look at... and did I hear you correctly? Did you say that we're funding HBCUs?
We are not funding HBCUs. We have funding in our critical needs carryover to support recruiting in order to improve diversity.
Oh, so that's recruiting funds.
Correct.
But when I look at $50 million in encumbered funds for purchases that we've made, and I get that some of it's buses, but when it's $25 million in school purchases, these are choices. They're priorities. And we're the ones who have got to drive the train on what priorities are, and you can't have a year-end budget review that reflects a half a million dollars in retention with the problem that's been created. I mean, the irony cannot be missed. So, I'm happy to work with each of you, be working with Ms. Michael. As soon as I became aware that this was a problem, I did start talking to a number of you, and I did start talking with Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael, as well as Dr. Lockard's... Dr. Braybrand, you're scot-free on this? Scot-free? I thought it was funny. A little levity. But we... I fundamentally have a problem with the fact that, at the time these employees were hired, we had tuition reimbursement. And for me to say to an employee, "If you get a master's degree at some point in your future, oh, by the way, with help from us, you will be rewarded," is one thing. To later then say, "You didn't get a master's degree, and now you will be punished," is something else completely in its entirety.[1664.63][1664.63](APPLAUSE). So, I'm happy to talk... I'm happy to talk to my colleagues and employee groups. Anyone who wants to email me, please feel free. Can I just ask you a basic question about ACE? Because this is something that I've also been talking about for six years. Do I understand correctly that our transfer to ACE was $600,000, or is it more?
So, we're recommending, as a result of this year-end budget, that we do a one-time transfer to ACE of that $600,000 to eliminate the deficit, so as they work to plan to restructure next year.
So, all right, so this is just another one that I'm going to say. What is our federally mandated or state-mandated transfer in order for them to keep getting funds? Because there is a certain amount at which they have to be funded by us to get matching grant money.
Correct, and that is correct, and we have been funding ACE with only that amount, matching grant funds of 0.2...
So, you're adding another $600,000 on top of that? I am not going to support that, and I'm not going to support it because for five years I have been saying, and we had ACE brought to us at one point and had a very detailed conversation with them and said, "Look, you are not our main mission. K through 12 is our main mission. This is adult ed. There are things that you're offering on which you make money hand over fist. ESOL, driver's ed, right off the top of my head, you make money hand over fist. If you want to offer underwater basket weaving or whatever else it is on which you lose money, you better offer a lot more courses on which you make money in order..." And to me, they didn't listen. And I don't feel an obligation at this point to direct more than a half a million dollars into ACE on something that we have directed them, not just recently, but over time. You have to get your house in order, and there are courses that are offered by Nova, and there are courses offered by George Mason, and Parks and Rec, and, and, and. And the objective that I... that we gave as a board to them was, "Look at what you're... offering, the breadth of what you're offering, and the things on which you're losing money have got to be pared down so you don't get yourselves back into this situation." And we did an increased transfer in the past, and I'm not for going back to the well on this. So there'll be other things that I want to talk about on Monday, but those were two things that I wanted to top-level cover tonight.
Mr. McElveen.
Real quick question on Item H, on the employee bonus placeholder. That will amount to how much on average for each employee? Do we, is it, does it differ based on employee category, or is it...
In the options that we're completing that we'll present Monday, we have multiple options, some that are consistent, but some that are different.
Okay. Look forward to receiving that information on Monday. Then on Item I, this is something that is very exciting to see after four long years, that we're finally getting to the point where we will have LTC in all of our schools. Can I ask, Dr. Duran, does that mean that LTC will be formally implemented in FY19 in all of our schools?
This, the, this is allowing us to have the curriculum. It won't necessarily be in all of our schools, but we're working towards that. So the money here was to develop the curriculum. We do not have the full amount of resources to have it in all of our schools, but the curriculum is what this was referring to.
Do we have a timeline for getting it in all of our schools?
We have a couple of various options, but that would depend upon the amount of funding we received and/or did not receive from, from the board moving forward on the staffing that's needed.
That's a concerning answer, because when we did the full-day Monday implementation, we were told that the money was already built in for implementing this curriculum throughout all of our schools. So I would like an answer from staff at some point, if not tonight, on what the heck's happening. Because we were told very clearly at that time that this, that the funding was there.
Ms. McLaughlin?
While I was in the back, I appreciated being able to hear, Ms. Michael, your presentation about what we'll be discussing at the work session on Monday. I do want to echo my strong support for what Ms. Schultz has raised as concern that I believe many of us here on the board have, which is the changes to the FY18 Bachelor Teacher Salary Scale changes. We're going to need to have a very serious discussion about the fact that this board has a record of really wanting to make sure that we grandfather changes to current employees. So I think we're going to need to make sure, Dr. Braybrand, that we have a real clarity around different options and what not just looks at the benchmarking of the school divisions around the region, which is very much what drove our salary scale changes. But I think that the board certainly wants to make sure that the community understands that we recognize when changes happen, you still have to have the broader conversation about grandfathering. We did that with ERFC just a few months ago and spent a nord amount of time trying to figure out what changes would be prospectively versus retroactively. So we're going to need to make sure to do that. Ms. Michael, I do have a quick question. I appreciated you, Susan Quinn, and many others worked very hard to put together about a 15-page document that gave the board more information for us to review on Monday related to this change. But from my recollection, there was about 460 some-odd employees that were going to be affected for FY18. Is that because those are the employees that would have hit Step 20 and/or 21 through 23, and they're the ones to be affected? But technically, it will be more than 460 if we're looking at someone who's maybe at Step 15 right now or Step 18? I would like that to be a piece of the data that we're going to have to really look at because, as Ms. Schultz is talking about options, and you look at grandfathering and costs involved, it's not going to be just the number of, for FY18, of who would have hit Step 20 to 23. It's all those who are maybe a year or so off of finding that change.
Correct.
And to my colleagues, again, we can talk more, but I've really benefited from talking to some teachers who are directly affected by it, and that's why I feel it's so important that we really look at this carefully. I also want to remind my colleagues that when we passed the budget in May, we, several of us, had follow-on motions about concerns related to additional funding needs. And one of them, I'm very pleased that we all supported, looking at some sort of bonus for employees who were not slated to get a raise, and we'll be doing that, as Ms. Michael noted. But we also did talk about substitute teacher pay. And so I want to reiterate to everybody that, you know, I want to make sure we've got the data needed for that conversation. Staff brought us some really good proposals. Some of us said that maybe it looked a little higher than the region, maybe we didn't need to go, you know, far exceeding it because we're, again, talking about how do we balance the resources we have. But I'll try to spend the weekend working with Ms. Corbett Sanders and others, who I know brought up the substitute teacher pay issues. But I wanted to kind of prepare Dr. Braybrand and Susan Quinn and Kristen Michael that that's going to be one I really want to ask a lot of questions to at the meeting. So otherwise, if there's anything else that anybody remembers we talked about, I just sort of remember a laundry list of saying, "Oh, we passed the budget, and oh, by the way, when we get to the fourth quarter, end of year, we want to look at money for this, 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 and this." And then that's going to be where we'll have some choices to be making. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I think we, we all are going to have to do a lot of thinking on Monday. And, Ms. Michael, I very much appreciate you getting me the, the data that I had asked for about what it would take to restore some of the steps. I'm assuming that you will have the figures on, on different possibilities, how much, how much it would cost to do different things at different levels. All right, I think we, I think we're all struggling with this, and we'll want to make the best decision we can. So thank you for, for your support, for getting us at this time of year when we have some more important decisions to make. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we will look forward to a longer discussion on Monday. And thank you, Ms. Michael, as always.
Thank you.
And please thank your staff on our behalf. Thanks. Okay, the following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the FY 2017 Final Budget Review is detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, approve the charges for the 2017, 2018, for the following School Board Citizen Advisory Committees, Adult and Community Education, Advanced Academic Programs, Career and Technical Education, Facilities Planning Advisory Council, Family and Early Childhood Education Program Head Start, Human Resources, Minority Student Achievement Oversight, School Health, Students with Disabilities, and Title I District Advisory Council, as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03, accept the Virginia Department of Education designation of Fairfax County Public Schools as the Governor's Regional School, should be Thomas Jefferson, as the Governor's Regional School for Science and Technology, North Virginia. That's Thomas Jefferson. 6.04, confirm committee liaisons and assignments as detailed in the agenda item. Next, Superintendent Matters. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. First of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you to this board for giving me the opportunity to serve as superintendent. I want to say thank you to this community for putting your trust in me. I recognize the awesome responsibility that it is to lead Fairfax County Public Schools. In a professional sense, I was born in this school system. I was raised in this school system, and it is my privilege and honor to come back and finish my educational career in this system. So I look forward to being a listener, a learner, and a leader. And one of the things, you listen, you learn, and then you lead. And to lead is to decide. And I am going to do my level best to make decisions today, tomorrow, the rest of my time here, that truly make sure that I have listened to all sides, that I have learned from all sides, and that when the decision is made, people, whether they agree with it or not, understand the rationale for the decisions I've made or the recommendations I've made to this board, depending on the issue at hand. I also want to say tonight that I believe that Fairfax County Public Schools must continue to pursue excellence, must continue to pursue equity, and must continue to pursue effectiveness, the maximization of our resources, also the maximization of our time with our folks and the workload that they have. And the final E that I want to share tonight around, around core values for me is expectations. I think the more we do to share our collective expectations, the community and employees and stakeholders of me, the board expectations of me, and my expectations for you all and the community, will help us and help me become a better leader for Fairfax County Public Schools. Finally, I'd like to also note that Superintendent Matters is slated to begin right now at 9:00. It is 8:59 by my computer, and I am thrilled because I actually believe that a prime, a premier school board needs to do its work during prime time. And it's wonderful to be on time. And I'm going to try to model bringing a process that is effective, but also efficient in terms of time. So I look forward to that as well. Just a couple of things I would also just like to note. FCPS has been named a District of Distinction by the District Administration, which is an online magazine for its support of EDSL, or Educational Decision Support Library, Responsive Instructional Tool. And responsive instruction is a multi-tiered support system where school teams problem-solve, teams make instructional decisions based on data. That's what good teams should be doing. And the tool was developed from input from teachers and administrators to streamline an existing manual process. So great to see technology used to make the workload easier. I'm also proud to share the foundation for FCPS launched a fundraising effort to pay off debt accrued by students on their meal accounts. A tally at the end of this past school year showed that students owed the district around $13,000. And we know, while the economy has improved, that there are still many families and many students that struggle to pay for their meals. On June 6th, the foundation accepted its first contribution to this effort, a $6,000 gift from Viking Capital LLC, which is a real estate investment company in Washington, D.C. The company has a commitment to donate 10% of its profits to charitable causes. And I want to especially thank Mount Vernon representative and our new vice chair, Karen Corbett Sanders, for her leadership in connecting the generous donors to the foundation for this to work out. What a wonderful, wonderful gesture for our students in our school system. I'm also thrilled to let you know that Governor Terry McAuliffe has awarded a $50,000 high school innovation grant to FCPS to develop programs that emphasize personal learning, college civic, and career readiness in alignment with local workforce needs. FCPS was one of only five school divisions to receive an initial planning grant, and that grant, I am proud to say, was awarded to Jeb Stewart High School to create a curriculum based on instructional needs of English learners and students with little formal education, while also providing opportunities for mentoring, career exploration, and internships. The instructional program will focus on literacy, numeracy, and workforce readiness. And if you listen to the governor, workforce readiness, getting our kids ready to go out and be productive in society is one of the key discussions that we're having around the Commonwealth. And I want to congratulate the principal of Stewart, Penny Gross, and her team for just outstanding work in developing this grant and receiving it. And I know they will do a great job in putting this plan in place at Stewart. Thank you very much. And again, it's an honor and privilege to be here. I'm very excited. And I know everybody mentioned challenges tonight, but I believe, deep in my heart, there's no challenge that this community cannot overcome. This is Fairfax County Public Schools. We can and will do the things that need to be done to make us the premier school system in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. There's that optimism. Let's go. Okay, the next item, our Board Committee Reports, and I will call in Ms. Heinz for a report on the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, first, I want to thank Ned Holland, who is probably on his way to Kansas City right now. Ned Holland was one of our first community members on the School Board's Audit Committee. We instituted community members a couple of years ago. And Ned, by being one of our first members, helped us to really create and build that position. So we owe him a great debt of gratitude. He's gone back, once he came, Kansas City, so we will miss him. The school board is now looking for another community member to replace him and to join Clay Hale, who is our other community member. We will welcome our new Auditor General later this month. I want to thank the Office of the Auditor General, and particularly Teresa Weatherman, our acting Auditor General, for the past several months for holding down the fort and doing really great work, keeping the work going. On Monday, the school board, full school board, had a work session during which we received a quarterly report from the Office of the Auditor General. It was an update on current audits, an update from Jeff Plattenberg of Facilities and Transportation on the transportation audit, and staff's response to that audit, and also a discussion of the fiscal year 2018 audit plan.
And I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a report on our forum, which we actually had this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, we had a forum this evening, and it was a dynamic discussion in which we decided to hold a work session on the existing policy 5011.3 regarding authority to contract to increase transparency in the contracting of non-professional services that exceed $100,000. And that will be the subject of a future work session. We also agreed to having another future work session, and that one will be for staff to provide a review of the curriculum training and response regarding sexual harassment and sexual assault in Fairfax County Public Schools.
Thank you. Board Matters, I will begin with Ms. Heinz.
I will pass tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
I'm going to just do one quick one. I want to thank the facility staff who took me in the, I think, probably 96-degree heat through West Springfield High School this week, traipsing through the bowels of a hollowed-out building is both frightening and exciting at the same time. But I will tell you that the students who are going to be in the math and science end of the building, in the second and third tier at the back of the building overlooking the fields, are going to have, they're going to want to go to math, and they're going to want to go to science. It doesn't look like it now, but the turnover that is going to happen in the construction and the paving, and yes, that means parking spaces, West Springfield, for this coming school year, in the scant, what, six weeks, is remarkable. And I just want to thank all of the contractors and subcontractors who are working so hard on West Springfield to get as much done as possible between now and the start of the school year. But truly, it's an amazing feat to turn a building, turn the front around to the side, add layers, blow out tennis courts and create parking. You know, it was a much-needed, long-needed renovation, and it's well underway, even though it looks kind of ugly from the inside. So thank you to them.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Quickly, I want to thank Chuck Pina and Fairfax Public Access for their generous donation of digital television equipment to the West Potomac Academy Television Production Program. It was an amazing gift, and now they have a state-of-the-art facility at West Potomac. We'd like to thank the staff and the nimble reflexes of our brand-new principal, Tangi Millard, for making sure that we made that happen. I would also encourage people to come out and meet Tangi next Tuesday evening, where she will be meeting with community members at the library within the school's building. I'm also going to encourage people who have a passion for STEM and robotics to come out and support international teams, high school teams from around the world, who have developed robots that will be competing in the first Global Robotics Challenge at DAR Constitution Hall this Sunday through Tuesday. It's a very exciting program with teams from 100 countries around the world. These kids have been working hard. And the most recent team to be granted access was a team...
a team of young women from the most rural area of Afghanistan that were given their visas yesterday. And so it's a great opportunity, but these kids are coming from all over the world, and they don't have parents or friends there to cheer them on. And so if you have some time and you want to go see the best and the brightest from around the world, please go ahead to DAR Constitution Hall next week.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate Stewart High School and Principal Penny Gross on the innovation grant. I know that they will make the most of it, and, and that is just very exciting to, to see how they will be able to move forward with that. And beyond that, I just wanted to additionally, as, as I leave my, my year as chair on the board, to thank the community as, as well, community members and advocacy groups who will, had been inviting me to things throughout the county that I might not otherwise be attending, because from spending more time just in, in my community, I'd probably go back to spending more time just in my community. But it was a great experience, and I want to thank community and, and advocates for, for making that a great year, too.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Just briefly, I, I do want to let Dr. Braybrand know how much I enjoyed our very first work session together on Monday, your first day on the job. You, right away, demonstrated some of your finest qualities that gave us such confidence in you as a leader, your ability to listen to board members and synthesize the feedback that we were bringing to the topics. It demonstrated to me right off the bat that we are going to have a very exciting time working together with you. And I know we talked in the elevator going down, and this will ring, I think, great cheer to many of my colleagues on the board, especially Mr. McElveen, which is, Dr. Braybrand is as committed to ensuring that we have high-quality decision-making, but doing it in a more expeditious manner than we have done in years past. And so I will certainly, as a loquacious Irishman, commit myself to Dr. Braybrand's modeling on how we can achieve both of those things. So welcome, and it's a pleasure having you here.
Ms. Darnett Kofax.
I will just echo the, my colleagues' comments. Dr. Braybrand, welcome. We are, we are pleased to have you here. You've had a busy week right off the bat, but this is, this is what you're, you're in for. So, and I know, and we really do appreciate your, your positive attitude and energy this first week, so, and I'm sure it will just continue. So thank you, and congratulations to my colleagues and who are stepping up, and to those who have served in the past, thank you so much, Ms. Evans. And, and Ms. Strauss, you're continuing your service. I, I know it, as, as a former chair, it's, it's a nice exhale. That's what I whispered to you, Ms. Evans. I said, you can exhale now. So thank you for everything that you've done, and soon we're going to have a summer break, aren't we? Ms. Schultz just said there's six weeks only left till school starts.
Back to school starts now. Mr. McElveen.
So as the less-loquacious Irishman at the table, I just have a couple of brief points. I did want to draw attention to what Ms. Corbett Sanders spoke about regarding the outcome of our forum work session tonight, the second of which was the, the board's focus on reviewing the curriculum training in response to issues of sexual harassment and sexual assault. We, this is an issue that the board is very interested in, in learning more about, and how the system is both proactive and reactive on these issues. And so, in the not-too-distant future, we will be having a more in-depth conversation on that piece. And I would just like to thank Sandy and Janie for their service over the past year. I can't tell you how many times I've gone up to Sandy and said, you just couldn't get any more on your plate, could you, this year? But it's been quite a year, and it's a good year to be ending and to be beginning with Sandy, or with, with Janie, Karen, and Dr. Braybrand.
We're starting off with an extra-large plate. We've learned from Sandy. And thank you again, Ms. Pedakonda, for your first meeting. We appreciated your remarks, and we look forward to continued information and wisdom from you representing the students. So thank you very much. And now we will go back into closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically personnel matters and contract matters pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia. Two, discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, disciplinary resignation of a specific public officer and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. And three, discuss and consider disciplinary matters concerning three students, two students pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Heinz. All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. The motion is unanimous. We are in closed session. Thank you.